You guys had to do some hustling around today. We respect your time and we are so glad that you're here to join us this evening to learn more about the BIG project. You will also be hearing tonight about the city's general plan and how we're preparing for growth. Just to give you an idea what you're in for this evening, we have this down. It's a two-hour evening event. So from six, come on down, Rochelle Clayton. Let's give this lady a hand. This is our new city manager. So we'd like you to jump right into Barstow events, and so far she hasn't missed a beat. We're so pleased to have her. So this evening, the first hour from six to seven, you will have presentations. And this is because we all know that somebody starts asking, there's no questions during the first hour, because we all know that somebody starts asking questions and you go over a rabbit hole down and never come back. So we don't do that. So we're not trying to be rude, but the first hour you're going to hear some presentations. The second hour, you will be able to go to the different booths. So let's say you say, hey, I want to talk to the assemblymen, or I want to talk to the supervisor, or I want to learn more from Placeworks or the City of Barstow. There's booths set up outside, and we encourage those one-on-one questions. We have Genesis in the front row who can answer all of your planning questions, too. So we have all kinds of information. The foyer is a bit small, so the tables are spread out. BNSF after will be down here, because we kind of know Lena always draws a crowd wherever she goes. So we will be there. So we hope to get your questions answered. We've been doing these presentations. I personally am excited about this project. I know many of you. I'm a City of Barstow retiree who's done everything from dog obedience to teaching at the college, as I see Dr. Bag in the back. And I am honored to be part of this team as project manager for BIG for the City of Barstow. So thank you for letting me still be part of this wonderful community and make a difference in the future of Barstow. So we hope to get your questions answered. With this, I am going to introduce you to Rochelle Clayton, our new city manager.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us at this event. It's awesome to have Lena Kent here and Adam from the hospital and to provide a lot of information to you on the project. My name is Rochelle Clayton, brand-new city manager, brand-new. This is day 11 for me. I'm very excited to be here and be in an area where my family is from. Been in government. Just a little bit about me, just to introduce myself. I've been in government for 30 years. I spent the first half of my career with the County of San Bernardino, and the second half of my career in city government, primarily in community and economic development and infrastructure planning. And I have spent the last year as interim city manager in San Bernardino, and before that, five years in Menifee, one of the fastest-growing in California. Very excited about the development that's coming here, and I'm looking forward to being a part of this project and taking us into the next chapter of what Barstow has to come. So with that, I would like to invite the CEO, Adam Loris, up to the podium, and he's here already, so, to have a discussion with me. And we will go ahead and get started with explaining some of the benefits of the project and the hospital.
Oh, it's working now. You gave me a mic. This is going to be brought back. Oh, you want me up here? John, who works at the hospital, who usually has to do all this stuff, put me up here. He didn't know what he did when he gave me a mic. I can just give you a little bit of a rundown on the hospital, what we've done for the community for the last little while, and what our plans are moving forward. You know, we've been in Marshall since 1958. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, 1958. We've been at the new hospital, new site, since 2012. And so lots of investment in there. We reinvest into the community, about $36 million a year in benefits and salaries and wages for the staff that live here. And then we invest about $55-ish million in charity care and other things for this community. So very, very excited about what's coming and the opportunity we have to help grow that opportunity. The one thing that frustrates me about the hospital is only about 35% to 40% of the people who work at the hospital live in Barstow. And part of that is because they don't have the amenities that they need to live here. They feel like they don't have the amenities. And I'm really excited about this project, that we can get 70% to 80% of the people who work at that hospital, so that more of those wages come back into this community is my, would be my goal on my project in some of this. So, yeah. Anything else you want to add?
Thank you. I did have a couple of questions that we wanted to make sure we covered tonight. And you've talked a little bit about it, but looking at what services that the hospital provides to the area residents now, and some of the benefits to come.
Yeah. Again, we spend a lot of money going back into the community. And one benefit that we have is that we pay property tax. We pay some of all those other taxes that help go back into the community. But also, big proponent of community health. And so improving the health of the communities it serves is part of our mission here. And so giving back, John does a great job at making sure that we put money back into the community where it needs to be. And so as we need to do grants, as we need to do health insurance for people, and cover charity care for people who aren't able to pay for their health care, we do a lot of that as well. That's roughly $15 to $20 million a year in underserved care that we give to the community.
That's great. And so with that, with those benefits that you mentioned, could this expand and improve health care in Barstow, and how do you see that?
Yeah. You know, we, that's an interesting question. And I know that I got prepped for that, but I'm just thinking, as I'm standing up here, there's a lot of ways that this helps benefit that. As you expand the number of people that are in the area, as you expand the population that's in an area, you're able to sustain more and better health care for people overall. The cost of doing health care goes down for everybody. And so, yeah, you know, as we expand that, as we get better-paying jobs, as we get better-paying people here, as we get more volume, that allows us to do more things. It allows us to reinvest into the community and build a better hospital, bigger hospital.
Excellent. And that's, I think you've already answered the last question, and that's what is your vision for the future of Barstow Hospital?
Yeah. Well, I think that some of the stuff that we haven't done yet at Barstow and the stuff that we need to get into is, there are lots of services that need to be offered in health care for this area, like having full-time cardiology, having full-time urology, having full-time GI coverage up here, having full-time ENTs, right? We used to have an ENT that was in Barstow. They're no longer here. And so having, with that expanded service, with that expanded population, you're able to sustain those type of specialists, so that we don't have to drive to Victorville or to Apple Valley. And honestly, if you want an ENT appointment right now, you have to go down into Loma Linda. And so as that community grows, as we expand that area, especially with this type of a job with the people that it's going to bring in, you can support some of those specialists who are going to need that younger population, so that we can get to those specialists that we need. The other part of that is, if it grows like we hope it will grow, having a 30-bed hospital isn't going to be enough. You know, Marshall Community Hospital is already, you know, with conversations with BNSF, has already said, you know, we'll probably need to expand by another 20 beds. So when the hospital was here in 1958, it was about a 60-bed hospital. When we built the new hospital in 2012, there wasn't enough volume to support that size hospital in this community. It didn't, we didn't have enough. And so we build a 30-bed hospital with the opportunity to expand up to 50 beds. And so we'll now be able to make that jump of making that promise, you know, fulfilling that promise that we had in 2012, that as we expand it, as the community was needed it, we could expand into that. So I'm really, really excited about that.
Excellent. That's very exciting. I'm very thrilled to see that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. So thank you. A round of applause. Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Colin Drucker up from Placeworks to give his presentation on the general plan.
Thank you. So there is a larger planning context that we're also considering when looking at the BIG project and the future of Barstow, trying to achieve some of those dreams. So that's why I'm here, why other folks are participating in all of this long-term planning. I know some of you are repeat visitors here, hearing us talk about this project, and some of you are new. For those of you who are new or simply decided to try to forget who I am, my name's Colin Drucker. I'm with a firm called Placeworks. We do long-range planning, design, environmental analysis. We've been working in County San Bernardino, Barstow area for a long, long time. Really kind of appreciate the future that can happen here. I'm going to go through some broad details, that's actually new information from what we presented before. If you see me go like this, it's not a nervous tic. It's because I'm signaling kind of a transition. I'm trying to introduce some information in a manner that you can actually see. We're going to have this whole presentation online, so, and I'm going to read some of it to you, because just, you know, it might not be legible from your side, but you're going to be able to view all of this, and then I'll be out there with other people being able to answer all the questions. So go ahead, the next slide. So just in case you're wondering, can you just remind me what a general plan is? This is this kind of long-term vision and policy guidance document for all the decision-makers, investment, property owners, residents. It really sets the tone for what the city is trying to accomplish in the future. And when new projects come, new opportunities come, what is the general direction for what decisions should be made? So you can see in there that overall vision. I'm going to have to be careful going like this. But actually, that was appropriate. Go ahead to the next one. She was more right than I was. So this is the new draft vision. So there was a vision in the 2015 plan. These plans are generally updated periodically. The last plan was a little shorter-term vision than most. So we were looking really 20 years in the future. So I'm going to go ahead and read it, because I imagine most of you aren't enjoying that font. "Barstow nestled at the crossroads of history and progress, in the heart of the Mojave Desert, is poised to be at the center of regional growth and serve as the hub of the West. The city and its people honor its past while forging a dynamic future, creating a complete community where residents thrive, visitors discover, and businesses flourish. Through collaboration between city leaders, residents, businesses, community organizations, and other stakeholders, Barstow will proactively address current challenges while seizing opportunities to create a prosperous and resilient future." That's kind of really an expansion upon the ideas and the concepts that were in the previous one, and tries to get a little bit more proactive, a little bit more aggressive in accomplishing a better future. Go on to the next one. So these are the, there's some overall objectives of what we're trying to accomplish with this long-term plan. So it's having those goals, those policies and implementation actions that ensure that Barstow remains and continues to become healthier, become more prosperous for everyone, not just certain parts of the community. Looking at kind of getting more livable wage jobs. There's been a long history of ideas and concepts, and we're really trying to make it so that there are more economic opportunities for everyone in the community. And then looking at those housing opportunities and expanding what is currently available to achieve opportunities for all walks of life and stages of life. So these other three, literally looking at that land use plan that sets the tone for what land uses should be where. I'll go through the changes in the land use plan in a little bit, and you'll see how we're trying to reposition some land uses to have better compatibility, ensure that investments kind of matriculate to everyone, and encourage people to make reinvestments in the community. And then lastly, looking at that circulation plan and the different facilities to capitalize on Barstow's location, and really kind of takes advantage of the innovation that can come and benefit Barstow and everybody else. So we've done a lot of outreach over the years. I just want to highlight this to kind of reemphasize the lives that we've touched in terms of connecting with people and spreading the awareness. So in 2022 was really when this effort began. The city realized, okay, we've got some really large ideas coming from a lot of different people, not just BNSF but others. We need to look at a more comprehensive effort. And so kind of, in parallel with the 75th anniversary of the city, it had a celebration, really started this update process. And then, over the course of the next year, in 2023, looked at a series of meetings, whether it be focus groups, really led by Jeanette and others, to reach out to a wide range of stakeholders, a wide spectrum of the community, gather up in town halls, community updates like this, to reach hundreds of people, to really inform them of the opportunities we were considering and to get input on what were the key issues and key priorities for them. Then in 2024, we kind of migrated into just updating people on where our ideas were going, what were the issues and opportunities we were finding as we started to do some of the technical analysis, to look at what are the implications of some of these concepts? What are we hearing from people and how are we incorporating their ideas into the plan? And then, tonight, we're here. And there was some activity earlier in the day, and now we're here talking to you over the next couple of hours, to really tell you what is new and what the next steps are. So this is just a list of the kind of range of people that we've talked to, the different groups of stakeholders, the different geographies in and around Barstow. And those top priorities that we've heard are really encouraging investment in the community, creating true career opportunities, giving those expansion of housing options, supporting local schools, making them better, improving public services and safety, and increasing recreational amenities. So some of that you saw, I think, in that draft vision. Some of the questions, the most common questions we're getting, obviously about the BIG specific plan, when's it going to happen? Will there be a lot of trucks, or is almost everything going to be by train? On future jobs, how many jobs are we talking about? What type? Will there be job training? Will there be an investment in people's ability to do those jobs? Land use changes, kind of what's going to go where and how's this going to affect me? And then public facilities, how's this going to affect how I get around Barstow, my experience in Barstow, and where the schools and parks going to go? So what we've done is, this is kind of a list of the types of work we've done. So we started off in early 2023, really looking at the initial parts of that land use and circulation planning. I'll turn this way, so I can actually talk to this part of the group. Looking at other development interests, what was really coming from other property owners now that they knew what we were looking at. And then understanding what the initial growth projections were and those implications. And then kind of continuing to do in coordination, updating people on where ideas were, and then conducting those technical studies, whether it be air quality, noise, traffic, and then refining those goals and policies, and then getting that feedback loop going and continuing to make refinements. So this is kind of a sample of some of the technical studies I'm talking about. It goes from those roadway capacity, a number of traffic modeling efforts to really understand how the roads will be affected, how they perform now, and how they might change in the future. How is that growth going to affect not only water supply, but water quality in the sewer system? And looking at air quality, what is this going to mean for air quality over the next 20 years? And are we going to have enough energy? Is this, how is this going to affect people currently today? And then looking at all of our cultural resources. So when we're talking about a lot of change, this is a lot of potential positive change we're talking about. Barstow could double in its size. And that's not just households going from an existing 9,000, this is just the city, existing 9,000 to 15,000 households, from 25,000 to 44,000 people, and for jobs going from 14,000 to 25,000 jobs. So really a sea change for Barstow, which has been much slower growth over the past decades. This is the current land use plan. We've got a large scale on that. Don't expect you to read this. If you go to the next one, it is the proposed one. So then, if you go to the next slide, I'll start to walk you through some of the changes that we're looking at. So in the current plan, it kind of in the northwest part of the city, we have an existing kind of industrial-commercial blend in the city, and then you have the unincorporated area that's got a lot of undeveloped land. And that is the area where BNSF and the city are looking at the BIG specific plan being located. And then that unincorporated portion be annexed into the city. So then, kind of across Main Street and the railroad tracks, you have what is today a real wild blend of residential, industrial, commercial, diverse use, open space, and it doesn't lend itself well to land use compatibility and kind of good long-term planning. So what we're looking at is shifting a lot of that residential over to the east, and I'll go over why in a second, and setting that area up for continuous employment uses that are much more compatible with BIG specific plan and each other. Notably, the two industrial areas that were kind of placed farther away from the 15, which is not necessarily where a lot of industrial uses of particularly logistics want to be, placing them in more compatible places closer to the 15. And then, once we go to the east side of the city, in the very northeast, where you can take kind of advantage of the confluence of the intersection, the 58 and the 15, taking an area that where diverse use, residential, commercial, is not necessarily the best place for it, didn't see a lot of market opportunity, logistics and industrial farther away from the central Barstow area, that made sense. And then this is really where that residential went. So kind of an intensification south of Rim Rock, around the community college, where when you have that new residential investment, with it comes newer amenities, investments in existing facilities. And so by placing most of that new residential here, you get benefits to the existing residents, rather than creating a west and an east Barstow, kind of an anew and an old Barstow. We don't want to do that. We want to make all of Barstow better. We're also taking a look at things like truck routes, and trying to make sure that with these new land uses, this is kind of the current truck route fabric, and we're going to take a look at these and see which ones make sense to be removed and which ones make sense to be kept. So this is the path forward. This is the last slide before I turn it back over. And this really just says, you know, right now, we've been doing a lot of that technical planning, a lot of that policy analysis. And then what you're going to see from us coming out is the draft environmental analysis. That's going to be later this year, and then looking towards 2026, where we get to that final stages. So with that, I will turn it back over, and that slide we'll show you, and go to the city's website for any context. We always want to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Drucker. That was an awesome presentation. Thank you. So thank you again for that comprehensive update overview. And now I'd like to invite Ms. Lena Kent from BNSF to give an update on BIG.
Thank you. How's everybody doing tonight? Good. It's so good to see all of you out here. I love coming to Barstow, and so many of you, I have said throughout the years, have been so kind and have treated us with such respect as we come out and talk about this important project here. When I listen to Colin talk about, you know, where we've been since we made the announcement in 2022, it's amazing how many conversations we've had, how many touchpoints we've had, how many of you I've sat in your living rooms and had conversations with you, or at various focus groups. And all of that information that you provided has been incorporated into this project to hopefully bring the best possible project that we can to this area. Unlike, I think, probably things that have been done in different parts of the state and in the network, is really just taking all of that feedback and putting it in and creating, I think, an amazing project. So you guys know, most of you know I talk with my hands, so this could get really interesting if I have to do this. So I'm sorry, I may be bouncing all over the place. But I'm going to go through the presentation. I know some of you, many of you have heard this, but for those of you that are not as familiar with the project or have not had a chance to see the presentation, I'm going to go through it quickly. I'll give you a sense of where we're at, and then I want to talk about something that I'm super proud of, and I'm proud of all of you who stepped up to help there. So we'll get to that towards the end of the presentation. But many of you know, BNSF, we're headquartered in Fort Worth, Texas. We have obviously a very large operation here in California, and most importantly, we have a big operation here in Barstow. So we operate about 32,500 miles of track in 28 states and three Canadian provinces with about 37,000 employees, trying to move those 1,200 trains every single day to bring goods that so many Americans across this country depend on. And so we're super proud of that. I think, I mean, we've obviously gone over this a number of times, but it's still something that's worth repeating about what happens at the port and when goods come into the ports of LA and Long Beach. So when that container comes in off of that ship, it's going to move in a couple of different ways. In many cases, I think I was at one terminal, 70% of the containers that were coming into that marine terminal were taken out of the terminal by truck, and they were going to an inland empire warehouse. Once it arrived at that inland empire warehouse, maybe 60 miles away from the port, they would take the contents out of that box, that 40-foot container, and they would repackage it in a 53-foot container. So maybe they'll take some TVs, some tennis shoes, and they'll package all of that into that 53-foot container that's now considered a domestic container. And then from there, they would drive it all the way back to Los Angeles. So you can see, it's really not super efficient doing that. A lot of handoffs increases the expense of moving those goods, which ultimately gets passed down to all of us, I believe, as consumers. And certainly, there are a lot of ways that we believe we can do that better. So that's one way. Another way is it gets loaded on directly at the port into a rail car and moves across the country via rail, to a destination in Kansas, Memphis. It could go as far as New York, where we would interchange with another railroad, Chicago, some of our main destinations. And then there's a lot of those containers that just stay right here in Southern California and/or go up to Northern California for all of us that live here for our own consumption. So we do think there's a lot of ways to cut out some of those inefficiencies, and again, move it in a more responsible way. Okay, so there is where our Barstow project, where it was born. So it was at the height of COVID, many of you've heard me say this, it was at the height of COVID where we had all those ships backed up at the ports. We had supply chain crisis. We had people going to the grocery store, nothing left there to buy. The toilet paper was wiped out, the water was wiped out. And it was at that point that the federal government came to us and said, we need you to try to do something different. How can you help in this situation? We had always thought Barstow was going to be a place that we were going to expand on. Because we have a large facility here, we have our main transcontinental rail line moving right through this area, connecting the ports of LA and Long Beach to destinations across the country. And we have a city that we have always had a really good working relationship with. So we knew long-term it was going to happen. We just didn't know when. And certainly when COVID happened, that's when it was pushed to the forefront. So we started to acquire the property. So we own about 4,600 acres now in Barstow, between Lynnwood and Hinckley. And we started to really think through, how can we, you know, eliminate some of the handoffs and move goods more efficiently? So what we propose to do, and this, I think, is something that's really, really important to say, because I still hear from people out there that think we're moving all of this up here by truck. We're going to put it on a truck, and it's going to go through the inland empire, and it's going to come up the Cajon Pass, and then we'll land it here at Barstow. That is not the plan. So the plan is, is we're going to load those containers onto rail cars at the ports of LA and Long Beach. They will move the 130 miles by rail to our onsite location here in Barstow, where we will have onsite warehouses. The container will be offloaded by a hybrid electric crane. It will move with an electric hosteler, a zero-emission hosteler, that will move that container in and around that facility, and it will go to that onsite warehouse, where it will be transloaded there. The contents taken out of that 40-foot container and then put into a 53-foot domestic container. Those containers will come right back to the rail piece of it, loaded onto a train, and moved to destinations across the country. So they'll go to your Chicagos, your Memphis, your Kansas, Texas, for the local consumption there. That 40-foot container will get loaded onto a train and will go directly back to the port. The intention is not to move it by a truck back down the highway. We're a railroad. We're not a trucking company. We're a railroad, so our intention is to move it by rail. And it is, it will be, I will tell you, because it's something I'm really proud of, it is the largest intermodal facility in the entire world. It's a first of its kind. I think it's transformative in the way that we move goods across this country. I mean, if you look at how it's set up now, you've got containers and trucks that are moving all over the inland empire. You've got the rail, the railroads 60 miles away, the warehouses out in the inland empire, and a lot of movement that's taking place on the highway. This certainly allows us to do it in a much more environmentally friendly way, and obviously take a lot of that constraint off of our local highways. Let me go to the next slide. I'm going to show you a quick video. I think it's a little technical at the end, but I think it does help explain a little bit about what we plan to do here, and then I'll get back up and I have some more things to share with you.
More than 30% of the international containers brought into the U.S. arrives through the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach. With this continuous flow of traffic and increasing demand at the ports and in the inland empire, there is an opportunity to create new jobs in the high desert, improve efficiency, and increase sustainability. The BNSF Railway Barstow International Gateway, or BIG, offers an opportunity to move cargo directly from the ports to its destination quickly and safely. With BIG, international containers will be loaded from ships onto BNSF trains to Barstow, located approximately 130 miles 130 miles from the ports, instead of being trucked. Containers will arrive at the state-of-the-art facility to be processed, where there will be more than half a million feet of track space and onsite warehouses. With sufficient capacity, the incoming containers from the ports will be transferred by hybrid electric cranes directly onto a waiting chassis within the facility. The containers will be transported through the facility via battery electric hostlers into the logistics park section of the facility, where they will ultimately be transloaded in the millions of available square feet of onsite integrated warehouses into domestic containers in preparation for further rail movement across North America. The domestic containers will then be positioned for an outbound train to destinations across our network, and the empty international containers will be returned back via train to the ports. While these domestic containers are being built into outbound trains, international containers for lower-density markets are also simultaneously being brought into the switching yard in preparation for outbound trains as well, ultimately allowing for denser trains entering the network. With these denser trains comes more efficiency and consistency to getting freight on time to its destination. As the containers move east, they will enter the rest of the BNSF network, supporting Southern California's ports, the local and national supply chain, and the economy.
All right. Thank you. All right. So I, you know, one other thing I really wanted to mention is, I've heard a few people say, this thing is never gonna happen. I mean, shoot, I could be up here and maybe I'm an imposter and I really don't represent the company and I've sold you this, you know, false project. I can tell you that we are 100% committed to building this project. Just a couple weeks ago, our CEO, Katie Farmer, was at the Journal of Commerce TPM conference. Lot of people there, a lot of shippers from around the world attend that conference. The entire speech for her, she was the keynote speaker, was on Barstow, all about this project and how important it is for not only this region, for the state of California, but for the nation's supply chain, extremely critical. And so she's very much committed to building this project and something we are all working really hard to continue to bring forward. Obviously, you know, it's a process. I mean, you heard Colin talk about all the things that need to be analyzed and studied. It takes a while to do that. And the document itself is thousands and thousands of pages long. But we're getting closer. We'll talk about that in just a second. You can go to the next one. We're getting closer to that. And I'm excited to be able to come back at some point and talk more about that document and then as well hear all of your feedback on what you think about what's in the document. So obviously, BIG is a great name, I think, for the project, because not only is it the footprint, but it's really what it brings to the region. Talking about a lot of jobs. That is a big reason to be excited, I think. We're talking about 20,000 direct and indirect jobs. So are all of them gonna work at the rail facility? No, you're gonna have a lot of them also working in all those onsite warehouses. You'll have a lot that work at the rail facility. But they're also gonna be working in a lot of those businesses that go to support that city that we've now built within your city. So certainly something I think to be pretty excited about. It has big impacts in terms of what it's gonna do for the supply chain. I hope with this project that we never see what happened in 2020, 2021 during COVID with the supply chain crisis, that we've come up with a solution to help prevent something like that from ever happening again, where we, when we go to the grocery store, they have what we need on the shelf and it's not something we have to be worried about. And then from an environmental perspective, obviously reducing a lot of that truck movement. And again, we're gonna do everything we can to put green technology into this facility, something that you all feel can be, you all can be proud of as well. You can go to the next one. So here's what I really wanted to talk about, and something I'm excited about. I think the last time I was with all of you, I had to bring some really grim news. And I know at that time, I told all of you, like, look, this project is in jeopardy, and I need your help. It was, I think, we talked about it, but I'll just kind of go through it really quickly again, so it refreshes everybody's memory. But in 2023, the California Air Resources Board passed a regulation that said all railroads in the state of California had to do a number of things. One, starting in 2026, we had to put $800 million into an account, so that when the time came, when there's electric locomotives available to be purchased, there would be this big slush fund of money that had built up over the years to cover electric locomotives. $800 million a year, that's just for BNSF. That's a third of what we spend on our capital for the entire 28 states and three Canadian provinces. So certainly a huge amount of money for us. We contemplated whether or not we'd have to stop at the border and offload containers there and truck them into the state of California. That's how serious this issue was. The second component of that was by 2030, any locomotive that was over 23 years older, older, could not operate in the state of California. So even if we would have taken the engine out of that locomotive, and we kept the body of the locomotive, and we put a brand-new engine into it, it couldn't operate in the state of California. So that would have impacted about 25,000 locomotives that operate nationwide. Lastly, by 2035, our locomotives, the only ones we could acquire, could be electric locomotives, which are not yet commercially feasible. I mean, we're working on it, we're getting there, we're just not there just yet. So certainly put this project in jeopardy. And the state of California had gone to the Environmental Protection Agency and asked for a waiver so that they could implement this rule. They didn't have authority to do that. That's really a federal issue. So EPA was considering it. And at that time, I came to you and I told all of you, we're not gonna be able to build this project if EPA gives them a waiver, because we simply will not be able to operate in this state, nor can we afford to invest close to $4 billion into this local economy and pay $800 million a year. I will tell you that because of all of you in this room who stood up, who wrote a letter, who made a phone call, who spoke out on the EPA public meeting, you made the difference. Congressman Olbernolte's office, he made a difference. County supervisor's office, Don Rao, Paul Cook, they made a difference. There's your local Barstow school district, you made a difference. All of your voices, you came together, you all stood up, you wrote letters, you made comments. And because of that, the EPA did not give them a waiver. And they have since, the state of California has since pulled that back. And that's what's allowed this project to move forward. So can you please just give yourselves a hand? You did amazing work. I think it's equally important, though, to say that even though we were successful and this project moves forward, it doesn't give us a free pass to not continue to do our fair share to protect the environment. So we were the first railroad to operate and test out a battery electric locomotive between Stockton and Barstow. We will continue to test that technology to bring it forward. It's just a process. And we were nowhere near to do it on a wide scale and replace every locomotive in the state of California. You also obviously have to have chargers along the way, not only in California, but across the nation to be able to move the goods. So certainly something that we continue to work on, we continue to acquire cleaner burning locomotives, investing in battery electric type equipment where we are able to do it. And we will continue to do that. And I tell you, that's our commitment to not only state of California, but to the rest of the nation, to operate as cleanly as we possibly can. So current project status. Colin went over a lot of those technical studies that we're currently working on. I'd love to be able to stand up here and say, I can tell you everything that you want to know about every aspect of, you know, we're gonna look at, we're looking at the traffic mitigation or traffic studies. We're looking at air quality. We're looking at any impacts to habitat out there. All of those technical studies are still currently underway. Again, it is thousands and thousands of pages. CEQA takes a long time. The California Environmental Quality Act takes a long time to get through that process. But something we still have, I will tell you, it's not just a small team. We have a massive team that's working on that. I know over 100 people that get together just to talk about all these various studies and putting that document together. So it's very complex. But something we still should have out on the street by the end of 2025. I lost my train of thought on that one, because I looked up there at that draft EIR. So by the end of 2025, we should have that draft document on the street. That's when all of you will have that opportunity to read over the document. I'll be here, I'll answer questions. We'll have our team here to answer questions. And then you'll be able to provide feedback. I like this, I don't like this. And then once we gather all of that feedback, we'll put together the final EIR. And then we will issue that. And it will be at that time that your city council here in Barstow will have to make a decision whether they approve the project or deny the project. Our hope is that that project gets approved, because we think it does a lot of great things for not only this area, again, but the state and the nation as a whole. So you can go to the next one. Again, this is where we are right now. And then so, once we get that, hopefully that approval from the city council, I'm just gonna remain positive. I have a T-shirt that says optimistic. So I'm always gonna try to be optimistic that we will get that vote of approval for the project. We will start construction immediately. And hopefully that will happen at the end of 2026. I will tell you that we would love to start construction this year if we were able to. But CEQA, again, is a process, and we're doing our best to go through that process and get that document out for all of you to review. So I will end there. But again, a heartfelt thank you to each and every one of you who really stood up to help, because often we think that our voices don't matter, and that, you know, it's just gonna go into that black hole, nobody's even gonna listen. But I will tell you that they heard us loud and clear. And there were over 30,000 letters that went into the EPA and into the state of California opposing the carbs in use locomotive rule, primarily focused because it was gonna hurt this project. So again, for all of you that stood up and believe in what we're doing here, thank you. You definitely made a difference. And I look forward, I'll have a booth out front. I'd love if you'd come by and say hello. If you have questions, you love it. If you don't love it, come by and talk to me. And let's talk about again why you don't love it, and let's see if we can get there. But I'm always open to have that conversation and to be here if you have any questions, whether it be tonight or any other night, you're welcome to reach out. So again, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you again to Ms. Lena Kent. And thank you to all of our presenters tonight. Thank you, CEO Colin, I'm sorry, Colin Drucker from Placeworks. Adams, our CEO for the hospital, gave great information tonight. Colin gave a lot of great information tonight. And again to Lena. We, one more round of applause for all of our presenters tonight. I want to thank you all for attending. And I wanted to thank our mayor, Mayor Silva, and city council, Mayor Protem Rose, council members, Hernandez, Noble, and Williams for supporting the city and the project moving forward. And all of you, our community that's here tonight, we are gonna have tables in the back. There will have the, you're welcome to come up and ask questions. As Lena said, if you have questions or complaints, please bring them up. They have a lot of information they can provide. There is a list back there so that you can, it's identified what table to go to. And again, I want to thank you for being here and welcome you to come to the back and get more information.